Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Staff Meeting, April 23, 2024, and we're going to ask everyone to introduce themselves on the dais.
Kristi Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerdumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Michael Freeman, Legal Counsel.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. Our first item is the Paycor Prerenovation Project Update. And just to turn it over to you, Mr. Jeff Aludo, to walk us through.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. So I do have a presentation here I'm going to walk the board through. I do this fairly briefly. So this is an update on the pre-renovation, the status of the pre-renovation projects at Paycor Stadium. As the board will recall, back in 2023, in December of 2023, the county and the Bengals agreed upon an identified set of 18 high priority infrastructure and capital repair projects down at the stadium. All of these projects were selected because of their ability to be fully integrated with the comprehensive renovation plan that's to commence in 2025 and moving forward, expected to. The county agreed to invest $39 million for those projects. And part of this was the teams done on the tail end of the team investing roughly $39 million into the stadium as well. So as we prepare to have more substantive conversations with the team about the future of the stadium, the future of the lease, one of the team's priorities that also meshed with the county's priority was making sure that we didn't let significant time go by and time elapsed and off-seasons go by and elapsed without making substantive investment into the stadium. So that was one of the driving factors here. We also knew, as I said, that the team had also made some substantive investments into the stadium as well and that the facility condition assessment had identified these projects specifically as projects that were important to do in the stadium within the first three years. So the county is utilizing its design-build team on the design and construction of the projects. That includes MSA, THP, and MMA design, including Messer as Construction Manager. And is currently, the good news is, we're tracking on schedule and on time and within budget on this program as a whole, so that is good news. And what I wanted to do today is just walk the board through some of these projects. I'm not going to go into detail on all of them. Some of them are a little bit more fan-focused, forward-facing, and quite frankly, a little bit more exciting than some of the other projects. But happy to follow up with the board on any of these that pique your interest. This is the list of all of the projects. So you've got projects related to the engineering systems and infrastructure of the stadium, things like lighting, elevators, fan experience, things like the club seat replacement, modifying the plaza, concession equipment, and other things like the audio and visual infrastructure of the stadium as well. And we're also using this time in advance of what are expected to be broader renovation plans in the future to do some of the stadium assessments that we know will be necessary for the stadium in the future, like pedestrian access, accessibility access, ADA issues, modeling of the stadium to facilitate future enhancements, et cetera. So what I'm going to do now is just walk through some of these projects to give you a little bit more of a bird's eye view as to how they're proceeding. So one of the first projects right out of the gate was the replacement of 12,286 club seats in the stadium. So you can see the stadium here as some of those seats were taken out. The good news is, the project came in roughly 28% below the budget estimate, and we're expecting on-time completion of that on July 5 of 2024. I've got some other images here in a moment I'll get to. But also just wanted to note that trying to use our taxpayer resources efficiently here and as effectively as we can, using the time when these seats are up to do the work underneath them that has to happen to make sure that the stadium remains in good condition for the long term. And that includes the concrete repairs beneath those seats, the waterproofing beneath the seats. And that agreement came in 22% below budget as well. And I would just remark at this point, as we're talking about this routine stuff like concrete repair and waterproofing, that when we had Gensler here back in 2022, I believe, they had remarked that it is that type of perhaps boring but routine and necessary maintenance that has done, that is what has kept the bones of this building and the stadium fresh and kept the bones strong so that we don't repeat what happened with Riverfront Stadium, where we were demolishing that stadium roughly 30 years after it was constructed. So here's some more pictures of the project as it has proceeded. You can see the seats going in there. This gives you an idea of some of the progress. And an up-close shot at the newer seats after installation. One of the other projects that we had moved forward on was the field turf replacement. We were moving away from a slit film turf to a monofilament turf. We were only doing the carpet of the turf only. We talked with the board about this, about the different options that were there. We could have actually proceeded with what we call retrofitted the entire bathtub because you see the gravel and the base in this picture right here. There's actually infrastructure underneath that, that if we wanted to, we could have scooped up all of that and done it. But it just didn't make sense at this point in time to move forward with something when there may be bigger renovations coming down the road, renovations that may require equipment on the field, et cetera. And we didn't want to potentially put at risk some of the newer infrastructure that we'd put under that field. So we did move forward with this. As I think we mentioned last time, when we talked about this project with the board, the team was one of the last, if not the last, team that was using the slit film turf that we took out, replacing that with a monofilament turf, which is more in line with NFL and industry standards right now. We're expecting to complete that on June 7 of 2024. So that is also being completed on time and within budget. Couple more images here. You can see the gravel base being laid down inside the stadium. Another shot. One of the projects that we also moved forward with right out of the gate was a project related to the accessibility of the stadium. And I don't mean that from an ADA perspective necessarily, but just the ability to access the stadium and to exit the stadium efficiently and addressing a critical issue related to the primary entrance at Freedom and Elm. Otherwise, I think folks who attend concerts and games there might know it as the Gate D entrance, I believe. So it's the first, when you come from the banks and you head towards the stadium, it's really the first entrance you run into. We are expanding the access to the stadium plaza at Freedom and Elm. Essentially tripling the size of that access. Folks that have been to the stadium during heavy traffic times know that there is the potential for that area to bottleneck and create some problems with, potential problems with people getting into and out of the stadium after events. We're also adding some additional stair towers along Second and Elm Street to provide some enhanced parking access. You can see one of those stairs going in there in this picture. But here is the, I hope the board will be able to see this effectively. But you can see in the image here, this is that bottlenecking that we had talked about. And as we have moved through the course of the project, you can see if I can go back and forth on this. Yes, I can. So you see the way it currently exists, and you can see that very narrow walkway over the parking lot, between the parking lot and the street there. And as we move forward, we have a much expanded access, which will really help alleviate that crowding that happens before and after games and just make it a safer environment for people to move through. This is also just an in-depth version or a close-up view version of that first slide that you saw. Some other, just notes about this particular project. The demolition and foundations bid on this came in 39% below estimate. That demo has been completed. The plaza expansion infrastructure came in 20% below. We're expecting that to be completed by July 19, and the stairs came in 35% below. We're expecting completion by July 26. There are some changes we're looking at to facilitate some additional safety enhancements that we'll talk to the board about at a previous time. But I just wanted to note that, all of which still keep us within our total budget here. We also talked with the board at a prior meeting about the video and audio improvements. Many of the video and fixtures within the stadium are very old. If you've been to a game and you attempt to view what's going on within the bowl from one of the screens, you know the difficulties with that. I think we showed some versions of that at the meeting where we focused specifically on this project. So we're replacing a lot of the aging video and technology through the stadium complex, including the cabling behind the scenes, so that it will be more IP-ready as opposed to some of the dated infrastructure that currently exists within the stadium. We're also using this opportunity to replace some of the audio infrastructure on the club level. This is just a scene of someone doing that. There's some additional projects behind the scenes that we're working on as well, all of which we've talked with the board about, but the freight elevator modernization. We've got two freight elevators in the building. They have been known to go down on occasion. And when one or both of those fail, it really puts a halt to some of the operations in the stadium. So we want to modernize those freight elevators. That project is currently out to bid. We're also in the project development phase for some of the lighting control systems in the building, in particular, the external, the exterior lighting and the building management system, all necessary to keep the stadium operating efficiently. But in particular, to address some of the board's broader goals as it relates to county operations, making sure that the stadiums remain energy efficient and as such, fit into the board's broader policy goals as it relates to environment and sustainability. We do have some additional concession work that we're doing as well. Those projects, I think, just came in from a bid perspective. That is stoves, grills, things that are specific to the stadium itself that again, are necessary for operation of the stadium regardless of whether there is a concert going on or whether there's a sporting event going on. It's just some of the basic infrastructure for the concession areas. That also came in at 11% below budget. And we're using this time also, as I mentioned, to do some reviews of some of the more operational aspects of the stadium that will be the platform, if you will, for moving forward with future renovations. So we're, in particular, the ADA accessibility improvements. I think the board wanted to ensure that we were looking at the issue of ADA, not only compliance, but just how individuals with disabilities access this stadium and have access to the amenities within the stadium. And some of that deals with code compliance, some of it just deals with operations. And so I've expressed to our design-build team that I will, whatever is needed of me in terms of guiding that particular aspect of the study, that I want to make sure when that study is done and is ready to be presented to the board, that it includes not just the bare bones compliance analysis, but also an analysis of operations and some of the more robust, a more robust look at the stadium and how we are operating it from an ADA perspective, so that we can give the board options as it relates to improvements that could be made. We're also looking at pedestrian access within the stadium. So we need to understand how people flow through that stadium. Again, it's not the most exciting project to talk about, but we really do need to understand and model how people access the services in the stadium, access the stadium, flow through it throughout the different levels of the stadium. So we know in particular, as we move forward with the master plan and the broader visioning, that we know what improvements are necessary related to how people actually use it. And the same goes with how people use the stadium vertically as well. We know we have some issues, and the team has been very concerned about some of the issues with the vertical transportation. We're working with them on that. This is a more complex item to address. But we are starting with the initial assessment of how the vertical transportation systems are accessed, how they are utilized in the facility, and how changes to those may be integrated with the broader master plan to facilitate different improvements to the stadium. So we want to take a look at all of that and to study that as we're moving through this initial pre-renovation program. And Commissioners, that's a high-level overview, but a pretty detailed one. As to the projects that we're doing, the status. Again, we are comfortably right now within budget, which I think the board wanted to ensure that we remain within budget. We remain on time with delivery of these projects. Happy to continue to provide updates throughout the summer as we get there and as we close in on the start of next season, so the board knows where we are. At this point, happy to answer any questions of the board. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and the update. And you mentioned that we're on time and so forth. Can you talk about that exact time? What month are we talking about? Will we be ready for the music festival?
Yeah, so there were some projects related to the, so we've talked about the season, obviously, which is one deadline, right? But there's other things that happened at the stadium. The plaza renovation specifically was one that we were looking at making sure we got completed with by the time of the Cincinnati Music Festival. My understanding is at this point that we were on time for that as well.
Okay, yeah, I would like to know that because I wouldn't want a lot of these people coming to town and they've got a construction site to try to get around. And considering that I'm looking at how much the hotels are charging. I mean, they're charging these folks premium and want them to pay upfront. I would hope that when they get to the facility, that it's not a construction site or seats aren't ready to go and those kind of things. So I'd like to get that timetable. I think that's important.
Yeah, I can give you a timetable more specifically as it relates to the music festival, that specific date and what projects will be done by that point. But I know the team is very focused on that particular, on that particular event, making sure the stadium's ready for that.
Yeah, want to make sure the screens and all of that because these people are paying premium dollar, and they have, and sometimes not treated like they should be treated. They bring in $107 million in economic impact. And I don't think we, you know, I don't want them going into the stadium and wearing a construction thing and we're inconvenienced, sorry for the mess and all that type of signs that are up. So that's why I wanted to find out about the timetable. When would you be able to get back to us on it?
If not late this week, then early next week, Commissioner. It shouldn't just be a couple of phone calls on that.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is you put on there that we're making upgrades to concessions, and it would lead people to kind of think that we make something. Do we make anything off of concessions?
No, so, well, as we're talking about the, from the lease perspective, no, we typically do not share in that revenue. But it is, the improvements that we're making are just part of the stadium infrastructure related to the concessions themselves.
Got you. And then the contract for concessions, who gets that? That's handled by the team, right? We're not involved in that at all. Couple of things I want to thank you for that. I wanted to bring up on the screen so people know what we're talking about. The lease that we're operating under is this particular lease from 1997. Obviously, none of us was here. And even the upgrades and the things that we're doing with $39 million is coming out of this particular lease. And as you can see in the lease, the first whereas, March 19, 1996, the voters approved a one cent sales tax increase to fund the construction of two sports facilities. And then it says, and a property tax rollback. Now, they advertised 30% I was around. But as you can see in this lease that was passed, not by us, we weren't here. You can see who was here. They did not put in the 30%. But everything, as it relates to the Bingo side of things, is in this big lease that I got in front of me, and we are operating from it. So a lot of these upgrades and these things, we are kind of on the hook to do. But it's in here. And so I wanted people to know what lease are we referring to. Now, this lease will be, you can take it down. This lease will be up, coming up. And I know that we have to move as it relates to this particular lease. But it all kind of comes together because every week, we're voting on stuff to upgrade and to keep the stadium in some kind of good shape. And so we've got this $39 million, and people are asking me, you know, I hear about the $39 million, what's going on with this lease? We have a backdrop now of homeowners who were promised 30%. And it's not just the 30%, but because it's a lot more. But they are getting killed out here. And in June, I have a senior that just hit me up with another letter. I get so many of them. In June, they'll be having the second half of it. So I think it all kind of plays together as we are looking at, for 20, almost 29 years, we've had to do everything that's in this particular lease. And whether we were here or not, we've got to implement it. And so as we go into the next phase, this particular lease allows us, even though we say we did 50/50 on this deal, the majority of the costs, 96% of it, upgrades cost, et cetera, falls on the backs of the taxpayers. And I'm a huge Bingo fan, but I'm elected to represent the taxpayers. And whether you're a fan or not, you're on the hook for 96%. Parking, they get 98% on game days. And so concessions, we don't get anything, but we're making upgrades to the concession stands. We get nothing on the liquor, we get nothing on the potato chips or anything of that nature. I want to be really clear that as we move forward, and I want to say from my perspective, I don't want to do a piecemeal approach. This is important. We're doing the $39 million, we're going to be ready for the season, we're going to move forward. But I want to be clear that I don't want to keep, I don't want to keep voting on piecemeal approaches. We've got to get down to, we got to get down to the lease. We got to get down to where we're going as we move forward. And I know that we had some meetings, but we got to get down to business because there's going to continue to be things that's got to get fixed, got to get put together and those kind of things. And I don't want a piecemeal approach. I want to also identify that the $39 million is separate from the new lease or the new, the expiration of this particular lease that will be coming forward. And I know that the Bengals, they have a choice in this particular lease. That was in 1997. They can exercise to keep going with this lease. They can exercise that without us having any say particularly on it because this lease that was negotiated was one of the most lump-sized leases that you've seen in the country, where the taxpayers really got screwed when you're paying 96%. Of course, who would want to give that up? So I wanted to highlight that. I think I've been clear on it, but I wanted to be more clear on it. As we move forward, I am very interested in a more diversified funding model. I've been very clear on that. We've got to get the NFL involved. And if you'll put that up there, see some of the NFL, what they're doing. And the reason I'm saying that, because, not the next one. If you look on here, here's what the NFL has been contributing to some of these other, these other cities, these other states. $200 million in Tennessee. Buffalo Bill's $200 million, the Denver Broncos $100 million. The reason I'm bringing that up is because I want to make sure that, I feel that Cincinnati, with the NFL, we have been disrespected. We've been disrespected. If you put the next one up. In our own stadium, I wanted to have a watch party, and the fans brought that to me. And I put that for the AFC Championship, and then they told us no. And not putting in any money, but told us no. Then you went to Detroit this past year, and look what they got, a watch party. And they were cheering and having a great time. So I don't want to go in having any deals that's going to be disrespectful to the taxpayers of Hamilton County. If Detroit can have it, but we can't have it in our own stadium. And we're making all these improvements on the backs of the taxpayers, and they can't even come in and have a watch party. So as we're moving forward, I just want to say that, because people say, where are you at on all this? And what I'm telling it, and I'm telling it to everybody, that I'm for a diversified funding model. The taxpayers have spoken, they don't like this deal. They spoke out. They don't like this deal at all. They don't like the current deal that we're under, where they're paying 96%. When Kansas City won the Super Bowl, I mean, they won the Super Bowl. I hate to keep saying they won the Super Bowl. Anything I like about Kansas City, they got some pretty good barbecue. But they won the Super Bowl, and they gave them a parade. But the taxpayers went in there and voted 58%, said, no, I can't afford to pay for no new stuff. So I want to be in tune with what the taxpayers want. I want to have a process. Today was good to give an update, what we're doing with the $39 million. But as we move forward, I want to have transparent meetings so that the public can know as we go into negotiations, what's the plan? What are we doing? And for me, you see, diversifying that model, the NFL has to put in no less than $100 million. Don't come in here with $25 million and want to, you know, hit us down and everybody else is getting $200 million or whatever. We got to start at $100 million and work our way up. Anything less is a slap in the face to us. And right now, they've been slapping us in the face. Tell us we can't have, we can't go in our own stadium and have a watch party? But Detroit, you can do it? That's what they told me, it was the NFL that said we couldn't do it. And so as we go into this, we also have to have the state involved. We know that the Browns is trying to get a new stadium, obviously, in Cleveland. So we'll have to partner in some regard there. But we definitely need to have the help of the state. Tennessee got hundreds of millions of dollars from their state to be able to help move their project forward. And then lastly, for me, I want to have more events in the stadium. All of our stadiums, both of our stadiums. And I see the Reds are doing a lot more after their games and they're having some concerts. We have two concerts a year at Paycor Stadium. And right now, even though we're doing construction, what we weren't doing construction is just sits there. But the bills keep racking up. It's our stadium when the bills are due, it's their stadium when the revenues come in. And so I'm just going to be really honest, particularly at this time where these homeowners are getting killed out here. And folks are going buying eggs, and the egg cost, the egg is up and all those kind of things. Hotel stays for that festival weekend is almost $600, $700. And so everything's going up. And parking, we don't, I mean, we only get 2% of parking on the game days. That's all we get, 2%. We don't get much. But when it's time to fix those garages and build those garages, we're on the hook to build them and pay for them. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm going to ask Mr. Aludo, as we're going, we did a good faith effort, we're partnering, and we're doing that, and the partnership is good. But when we fix up, and I'm for fixing up the concessions, but we don't get a piece of the concessions. I mean, we're fixing it up, but we don't get, the taxpayers don't get anything off of it. We're fixing up, you know, entries and all that, but we ain't, we ain't getting a piece of the pie. How do we get some of this stuff to take this cost down, bring in more revenues? And we've got to bring in a third party to book more events. I'm very disappointed that we didn't get that WWE, that outdoor event that looked for outdoor stadiums that brings 100,000 people. And Cleveland went after it and we didn't even go after it. I, I asked the administrator, it was the last, you know, but we shouldn't be the administrator. I shouldn't be getting administered. Can we go after this? Man, we should have been going after it. We got these stadiums sitting around. So I want to just be on the record in that regard that, um, one, I want to make sure, one, we need to get moving. And two, when we do get moving, let's keep the public, and I'm speaking for me, I know other commissioners have also made, wanted to make sure that public has involvement as well. Um, but I'm speaking for myself, the NFL got to put more skin in the game. If you come, call here and shut us down, we can't even walk in our own stadium. Well, you got to put some money up. And I'm not talking about chump change based on what you're giving these other, these other, uh, cities. We should be just as respected as these other cities. And of course, uh, the state, as they start to go into their budget, they'll be going into their budget soon. We've got to make sure we're at the table, uh, to try to get some help as well as private funding. And then looking at ways we can bring additional dollars in. It's good we fixing the seats, but now we got to try to see how we can bring more people to sit in those seats beyond just the games that can bring more money in and take the cost off the backs of the taxpayers. So that's my goal is get the, now it's going to be hard. I'm going to tell you it's going to be real hard because this, the people before us, you know, people you saw it, whoever was involved, they signed away the county and the taxpayers. They signed, they signed them away and it's this thing, ironclad, 20, it'll be 29 years, ironclad. So it's going to be hard when the majority of the folks, the, um, what the public puts in is about 33%. And we have put in 96%. It's a hard thing to work on. Uh, but, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get a win-win. Both, I want, you know, I want the Bengals to win and I want the taxpayers to win. So Mr. Ludo, as I, uh, my, I guess my question would be, uh, kind of where are we? So the public knows that we're not just sitting around. People say, well, they, they just down there sitting around. Are we working toward this? Do we have no lawyers? Have we brought on people? Are we ready to try to work together as, uh, as time is ticking?
Yeah. So thank, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks for the question. Uh, so yeah, we, we are ready to move forward on, in more substantive discussions with the team on, on the lease at this point. Um, and I think we had just, uh, conversations with board offices, uh, on this. But, you know, I wish we, uh, were further along at this point, but we are where we are. And the, and the rationale for that, um, is because of a lot of the work that you saw in, in the presentation. A couple of reasons. Number one, uh, we wanted to make sure that, uh, as we are entering into these discussions, that we could do it, um, with the knowledge that we're making the improvements in the stadium that need to be made to keep the stadium relevant structurally and to keep it, um, from the type of experience that we saw with Riverfront. And it took a lot of effort to get that done, starting in about October, November, December of last year. A lot of work to get those projects up and running so that they were happening, uh, in this offseason. We're doing that now. We've got that, uh, I don't want to say on autopilot. I think there would be some people who work in those projects who might disagree with me on that. Um, but from a strategic perspective, we've got that, those projects moving now. We're also wanting to be closer along to finalization of the, the master plan that would come in as well. So that we have the vision that is going to guide, uh, that, uh, th- those discussions, uh, moving forward. And we are now closer to having that. We don't necessarily need to have it in our lap. We need to be at, at the point, uh, where as we start the discussions with the team, we can, uh, uh, we can then, um, uh, integrate that, that master plan information as it becomes available. So, um, yes, I think we're, we're ready to, to take that next step. There's reasons for why, um, we are where we are at this point. Um, but we're ready to take those, those next steps and happy to keep the board apprised as we do so. Um, one, uh, quick item, just not to digress, but just wanted to, um, to let you in. I haven't had a chance to get back to you on this particular question, Commissioner, so I apologize for that. Um, I did get a response from, uh, the, the team on the, the WWE event. They did reach out several times. They said they didn't, they didn't get a call back. So, um, they, they did go after that. I just wanted to, to let you know about that since we haven't had a chance to talk about it.
Yeah, I appreciate it because I've been asking and asking. The next thing I know, Cleveland had it. Um, so I guess, uh, thank you for that. We had to get, obviously the responsibilities that we have in this. And you're trying to make sure that we're ready for the season. We got that point. Um, I do want to say though, that on this master plan, I mean, it's, it's, it's time. I think we all, you agree as well, uh, but it's time and these folks need to get a, we need to give everybody a deadline so that we're not at the kind of last minute with our back against the wall. Um, I know this was something that was pulled together even before I was even elected. Uh, but we need to get these people, put some fire under them.
Yeah. If I could, Commissioner, on that, just, just really, really quickly, just so the folks who might be watching at home understand. So, um, there was a, um, a process that we, we went through to better understand the broader renovation needs of the stadium that was, that was divided into two components. One is the facility condition assessment, which is an analysis of the, uh, of the, uh, the bones of the stadium, if you will, the maintenance that has to happen. And the second component of that was more the master plan, which talks about the, the long-term improvements to the stadium that could be made to keep it relevant from a, uh, from a fan perspective, et cetera, from an experience perspective. They're really two different things. The facility condition assessment was completed, um, pretty quickly. The master plan has taken longer. It's taken a lot longer than we had hoped for to, to integrate that with the facility condition assessment, to work with multiple stakeholders, um, and, uh, to, uh, work in, in the context of the other things going on in the stadium. But we now have our design, build, uh, team working with Gensler, uh, to put the finishing touches on that. So I'm very hopeful that we'll have something, um, on that by late spring. So we'll have that for the board in time certainly to in, inform, uh, the broader discussions that we'll have with the team.
I think it will help us to have a timeline that we could put out to the public. I think I mentioned this before, that we could put out to the public. And everybody knows, the Bengals know, we know, um, the people know. And I mentioned that to you. I think that's something you said you're working on. Um, but I, hopefully we can get something out, uh, a little quicker. So everybody kind of knows what, what page we're on. Just an outline. It might not be specific, but kind of give people outline of what we're trying to, what we're trying to do. I'll open it up. Vice President Dreeha.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was going to highlight how these things all fit together. Cause this is, uh, a presentation about the current construction renovations that are going on. But I had, uh, to, to kind of back up for a minute. Um, so we've got a couple of different things at play. We've got the facilities assessment, which is what we're working on here. So this is, these projects fit into what we know we need to do. Um, so it's a very practical approach in partnership with the Bengals, um, to do some renovations, about 70 million, 71 million, um, that we know we need to do. So I think that makes sense. I do want to highlight also that this 50/50 split between the team and the county is a new look, uh, for the team and the county. Uh, because we've been paying, uh, into the nineties, 90%, 94% of all the renovations have been done by the taxpayers in the past. And the team is now kicking in about 50% of these renovations. So I do think that's a positive thing and I think it's a positive sign moving into, uh, the lease negotiations. But I do want to distinguish between the facilities assessment, which is what we're talking about, versus the master plan, which we don't have yet, uh, but we have some sense and we've all weighed in on, uh, as have the Bengals, about what we might vision for, um, the stadium moving forward, both by way of a better fan experience, but also making it more accessible for people, um, whether it's people with disabilities or people that can afford different levels of tickets. Um, you know, making, making it just more accessible to the community. And also, um, you know, redoing portions of the stadium, um, so that when we bring concerts and more events in, it, you know, it, it is, um, interactive with those kinds of events outside of just, uh, football games. And so I think it's important that we, we have that vision in front of us. I know it's coming soon, um, but I'm anxious to get that and then start in earnest with the conversations with the Bengals. Cause that is kind of the final piece that needs to be in place as we move into the negotiations. And then we've got the lease, which is, um, you know, always kind of hanging over our heads because we have to abide by the terms of the lease. We don't agree to all those terms of the lease and yet that was, that's what governs the relationship. And so, uh, you know, I, I too am interested in, um, you know, moving that forward as quickly as we can. We've got some time here. It's not up until 2026. But I think all of us, and I think including the Bengals, would like to get that done sooner than later. So we know, we, yes, we have a certain future, uh, and we're not guessing as to whether or not we're going to bump up against a deadline. Nor are we guessing as to who wants what and how we can move forward together. Um, so, you know, I, I like to, I was just asked this the other day about the lease. Well, you know, um, you guys need to get negotiations with the Bengals. We're always in negotiations with the Bengals. I mean, we're always talking about, uh, what projects need to be done. We're always talking about, um, what needs to be replaced and repaired, uh, to make that stadium functional for the games. We, we've made 19 amendments to the lease. So it's not as if we're not talking, we never talk to the Bengals and we're waiting for some date certain to go into a room and talk to the Bengals. We're always talking to the Bengals. It's not in terms of redoing the lease, but rather improving the stadium, making sure that, um, we are aware of what's going on, that they are aware of what's going on. We're working in collaboration. Um, so when we get to the point where we're in the room with the lease, after we've got the, you know, the master plan in our hands, or, or rather we know it's coming, um, then that's just from my vantage point, a continuation in a more intensive, um, conversation with the Bengals to say, all right, now we've got this lease in front of us and we, we need to renegotiate the lease. And so, uh, I'm, you know, as anxious as anybody to get that moving. As I said, I don't, I don't think any of us like the, kind of the uncertainty, um, without having that in front of us and having that hammered out with the team. So, um, looking forward to getting that done. But I, I do appreciate the update, you know, in public. Um, so that not only do we have the information, but also the, you know, general public has the information. And I think it might be helpful to do these periodically, um, you know, as, as we go. So that people know what the invest, I mean, it's their investment, right? The taxpayers are paying for these investments. And I think it is helpful for them to understand what they're investing in, why we're investing and what we're investing in, and, uh, the status of the negotiations with the Bengals. So I do appreciate the update. I don't really have any other, other questions, uh, because I've, yeah, this is all pretty much, um, a, a lot of what we've been talking about for the last few months by way of, uh, the renovations that need to be done. So I'm just glad that we, we have struck a new tone, uh, with the Bengals. And I'm hoping that that is the tone moving forward into the lease negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jeff, for the update. Um, first of all, I'd like to say this dress has nothing to do with the Bengals. People have been asking me. Uh, but I happened to go to Avondale and their town center is opening up. And this was to represent the fierceness of the people in Avondale and who refuse to give up. Okay, um, it's very clear to me that we're, uh, financially contributing to the upgrade of that structure, uh, Paycor, and that we're committed to making sure that things are the way they should be when people come to visit for games or whatever, what, um, other things are going on. I want to talk a little bit about the lease because it came up. But, uh, we know that the lease, uh, that we're stuck with was unrealistic. I would say a little crazy. And I don't know how we think that the lease could be, since it did not make sense, that the, uh, 30% rebate would make sense. And I, um, say that that 30% rebate was put in there unrealistically, not considering the financial landscape of Hamilton County to really suck the public in. That's what I think it was put in there for. Um, I had a question, Jeff, about the club seats. Uh, what percentage of the seats in the stadium are club seats? Are, are, is that all the seats other than the boxes or what?
Uh, Commissioner, no, it is not. I'm just going to do some quick math here. Um, and this is very approximate, uh, but of the ones we're replacing at least, it's about 19%, 19, 20%, 12,000.
So are those like the good seats?
The, 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 the club seats are the, the seats that then also are on the level to have access to, to a inside club as well.
Okay. So is there some sense of, um, renovating the other seats in the stadium?
Yeah. So I think we went by what was called for first in the facility condition assessment. Uh, but yeah, as we get into the broader renovation, I think we'll be, you know, those seats are all going to have to be replaced at some point. So absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Um, in addition, Jeff, I heard you talk about ADA compliance and that it's not only important that we're compliant, but we also are convenient for those who have disabilities. And I totally agree with that, uh, you know, have our ADA people have to go in the wheelchair and go through the hallway in the dark to go to wherever they have to reach is unacceptable, uh, for me. So I thought that was a good statement that you said that we also don't want them. I don't want them to feel any different, uh, any more different than they have to. So I appreciate that. Um, I think I had one. Let me see if I had something now. Um, let me see. I think I've covered it all. That's all I have for now. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Yeah.
Thanks, Jeff, um, or Mr. Ludo. I would like to, just some actionable steps. One is we talked about a timeline. I've talked about it a couple of times. I'd like to get back to us with a timeline that we can share with the public on what we're doing as it relates to, um, the lease. Cause one of the things, uh, people, there are a lot of landlords, uh, in our, in our community. And one thing a landlord, when they have somebody's lease about to be up, they hardly ever go in without getting a signed lease for the future. They don't go in and start doing new paint. Uh, they don't go in, put a deck in the back and make all these improvements. They're trying to get you to sign that lease and then they come in with all the improvements. And so as we've said earlier, we had 19 amendments to this 20, almost 29-year contract. Um, but there's been hardly no amendments to help the taxpayers. So that's why I'm so committed to the 30%. It could be more. It could be something else. But the taxpayers got to get something, whether you go, because you go to a game, you got to pay to go to the game. You go in the, you go to the garage, you got to pay to go into the garage. And you got to pay to build the thing and keep it up. So we, I want something that can go back to the taxpayers, is tangible, that's in ironclad, just like we're ironclad. We weren't here, but we got a lease that we got to do for people who was here way before us. So I want to make sure we have a timeline so the people know what we're doing. And then I do want to get the dates to make sure that, um, Music Fest weekend, we're not in there with a bunch of signs talking about excuse the mess and excuse the dust and all that. Um, so if they say they're going to get it finished by that. Um, so I think that would be helpful, uh, for next steps because I don't want anyone saying we're slowing down on our side, the process. Um, and at the same time, I know that there's timetables with the NFL and this G5 and all this other stuff. And, um, I'll be honest, I mean, I wish I could meet with Roger Goodell because I don't feel like we have been given the, our city, our taxpayers, our county is not getting the respect that these other cities are getting. And I just want to make sure that, uh, we're not going to be, uh, last on the totem pole. I don't think any of us want that. So, but a timeline would be great that, uh, once we come together and everybody agree, some kind of timeline so that people can follow it and people can know where we are and they can follow along with us. And then again, the dates, uh, you had some dates. You said we definitely going to make the dates. Um, get those dates out. So people know that with the $39 million, we will be completed and ready to go. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda is Children's Services Levy Update. Director Michael Patton from Jobs and Family Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I think I have a presentation that should be up. We have a clip for me. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner, for having us this afternoon. Um, happy to be here today to give you an update on the status of the Children's Services Levy passed by voters in November of 2021. Uh, I'm joined today, uh, by Margie Weaver, Director of Children's Services, uh, John Nelson, Assistant Director of Finance and Operations, Laura Wolf, uh, Contracting Director, and also Jen Ketter, uh, who helped, uh, develop the presentation and gave input here. Uh, throughout the presentation, I'll do several things. I'm going to talk about why the levy is important. Uh, we'll review current challenges in children's services, which will also, uh, reflect why the levy is important. What we've done over the last two and a half years to address recommendations and priorities as established by the Tax Level Review Committee in 2021. Where we are from a financial perspective, uh, with the levy and review projections through 2026. And also review opportunities that we see and I see as, uh, for new investment in children and families based on the Tax Level Review Committee recommendations. So why the levy is important, as you So why the levy is important, as you all know, and I'll just state this also for those that are watching, we're in a unique position in Hamilton County because we have a levy to support children's services and the care and placement of children. The levy provides an opportunity for us to increase family reunification, fund new prevention programs, and expand kinship support when children can't stay with their biological parents. It also allows us a maximum flexibility to maximize the funding sources we get from our state and federal allocations. Studies show that children have better outcomes when they are with family and they can stay connected to their community. This slide covers calls to two-for-one kids and comparisons between 2022 and 2023, and also the total number of children served, as well as new reports of abuse and neglect over those two years. While this slide reflects a reduction in the number of calls and reports of abuse and neglect from 2022 to 2023, we continue to see cases that are more severe and require more intensive and costly services. There is also anecdotally an increase in number of children who are involved in multiple systems with complex care, complex care needs. So we'll move on to the challenges, and I just want to point out too, that the challenges are also indicative of why we believe the Children's Services Levy is critical in Hamilton County and why it's important. There remains high community need for the services that we provide through JFS and Children's Services. Poverty, racial economic disparities continue to be challenges for Children's Services. Untreated mental illness is also on the rise. I'll discuss this a little bit later when I talk about opportunities as it relates to the levy. Staff turnover, particularly among new hires and less tenured staff, continue to be a challenge. And 81% of the cases open include either substance abuse, mental health, or domestic violence, or some combination of the three. So next slide talks about turnover and the impact of caseload sizes, impact that turnover has on caseload sizes. Caseloads remain very high and significantly over best practice. Ongoing is struggle with high level of turnover and high caseloads relative to the Council on Accreditation, which are eight department, not department, but standards that are established nationally for caseload sizes for individuals who work in child welfare. Persistently high caseloads mean that there's less time available for families who have cases with Hamilton County Job and Family Services. And obviously, a high caseload drives additional turnover. In addition to that, we continue to struggle with caseloads and assessments relative to the Council on Accreditation recommendations. We continually manage those caseloads by leveraging support from other areas outside of ongoing an assessment, such as managers and other areas, as well as permanency and kinship, to ensure we meet our mandates, specifically seeing children and documenting While we've seen a slow, a turnover slowdown in recent months, and I want to say that one more time, while we've seen turnover slowdown in recent months, we continue to work on ways to be competitive with other private and public sector jobs. And I'll talk about this a little bit later when we talk about the actions that we've taken. But we do know the work generates high level of turnover in this particular field. We're working to, to address that. This next slide talks about the total number of children in custody and entering custody over the last several years. The total number of youth in custody, which would include temporary interim and permanent custody, have remained relatively consistent over the last several years, while youth in permanent custody has gone down slightly. We believe this is due to our work when appropriate to reunify families and place children with relatives. The youth in custody number has also leveled off after 2018, when there was a spike due to the opioid epidemic. Disproportionality continues to be an ongoing challenge locally and nationally. We must continue to look at strategies to address this challenge. We think the work that we're doing in the area of kinship helps to address that by placing children in care with families and relatives, or reunitifying them with their families when that is appropriate. We believe that can address the number of cases that we have open on families if we can reunify and close those cases with families with the kids that we have in care. We also are working with Metro Counties and KC families on a community response guide. This is an effort to influence equitable reporting, and they work with providers as well as counties to look at ways to ensure that our mandated reporters are making good decisions when they meet and come into contact with families so that they refer them to necessary resources as a way to prevent them coming into care in the first place. In addition to that, we're working with Family Support Network through United Way, which is a research model to provide resources and services to families in need and access it through 211. I'll add that we also, and this is maybe a little bit underreported or under, under discussed, but in general, because we are a combined agency, the other services that we provide, I see as prevention. So the work we do with the 513 Relief Bus, for example, by being out in the community where people are to give them services and resources can also help support them in times of crisis so that they hopefully don't need Children's Services down the road. We also are partnering with Community Link, with Every Mother's Advocate, which provides wraparound services to mothers who need support to prevent the need for our intervention. Placement costs, we continue to see placement cost on the, on the rise. Increased provider costs in children with complex trauma and behavioral issues have led to higher placement costs, which we anticipate will continue. Children involved with multiple systems often require individualized service and resources tailored to individual needs, which is, which is also a driver of high placement cost. Services designed to keep children in the home and in the least restrictive environment and setting can also be expensive. In addition to that, substantial labor shortages in the mental health and social service sector limits access to resources and support for children and families. Lack of available placements is a significant barrier in keeping children in their homes and the communities in the least restrictive environment. So now we'll move on to taking action. As I mentioned before, these are actions that we've taken in response to the Tax Levy Review Committee recommendations that were presented in 2021 when the levy was passed. So far, we have increased the kinship stipend. Again, I mentioned before that children do better when they are with kin. We've expanded access to kinship childcare, implemented kinship navigator pilot with Beach Acres, which is one of our prevention contracts that you've seen recently on the board agenda as we expand our efforts to, to look at prevention opportunities for our community. Work with the Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center, Impact U Project, specifically designed to improve our efforts to reach kin. So this is about outreach and marketing and how we make sure that kin are aware of the services we provide for families who are in need. Launched a new program to support kinship families through the New Life Furniture is an example of that, where if a child is placed with a family, we work directly with them to give them access to furniture to make that transition a little bit more easy and smooth for them. Expanded kinship section staffing within Children's Services. We're expanding the kinship unit to make sure we have those staffing and resources available to do the work necessary to identify, locate, and hopefully place children with kin when it's appropriate. And also improve direct communication with our kinship provider through those expansions. This graph kind of reflects what, what we've done so far in the space of kin over the last four years, which I think is exceptional. We have increased the number of children placed with kin by 13% in 2020. That percentage was 26% by 2024. The number of kids that we have placed with kin have increased to 39%, which I think is a really important point and significant for, we believe, outcomes for children in, in our care. Workforce-related actions that we've taken. Compensation, we've raised wages for caseworker classification. You guys are aware of the reopeners that we had last year that had an impact on our ability to be more competitive related to caseworker salary. So proud of that. We're in, currently going through wage negotiations and contract negotiations with the union this year. We hope to have that resolved at some time in the near future. Retention and sign-on bonuses in 2023 with support from the state, I think was significant in helping us stem the tide of employees who were leaving, although we still see some of that happening. But that, that has been a significant contribution to our efforts there. Higher pay for professional licensure, so we've looked at different licensing opportunities and we're currently in negotiation, hopefully with, with the union to look at how we might be able to recognize those credentials and pay more for those specialties. Supplemental pay for key positions. In addition to that, we've offered, as you all know, tuition reimbursement. Dictation software that we purchased that helps caseworkers in the field speak directly into a system that then documents their interaction with their clients. Increased program support staff, implemented project, more mentoring to help less seasoned staff partner with more seasoned staff to get experience on how to navigate the work that, that comes along with Children's Services. Virtual reality setting, training for staff to give them an experience upfront as we look at new hires coming onboard, but also staff newer in the, in the position to give them a realistic understanding of what the work looks like when they do work for Children's Services. Also looking at a new contracting system that we have coming online to streamline the contracting process for our providers as well. Recruitment and retention, we've worked with HR over the last year and a half on a recruitment task force that we continue to focus on strategies to bring in new hires. New, new hire onboarding system developed through our IS system to streamline that process and send notifications to, through that process more quickly so the people that are in the pipeline are making the hiring decisions, have a better streamlined way of communicating with one another and making decisions more quickly. We've engaged recruitment firms, provide internal trauma, resiliency supports for staff, and also working with HR on a paid fellowship, as well as internship opportunities for students coming out of school. The other big piece of the Tax Levy Review Committee recommendations has to do with prevention. And so to that end, we've added positions and contracting program support to aid in the expansion of the services and pilots that we are considering and entering into contracts with related to prevention services. The Kids in School Rule Educational Support Expansion, including Found Village, expanding of nursing contracts with Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center, where we have staff who have access to nurses to get immediate feedback on scenarios where they're working with kids and they need to have some consultation with nurses on next steps to make sure our kids are healthy and safe. We've increased provider rates up to 12% as those contracts come up for renewal. We have recognized that providers also are in a financial difficult position, and so we've tried to make sure that we are providing support and financial support to them so that they can run their operation appropriately. Development of provider placement incentives, structured rate for emergent placements, pending contract through Cradle Cincinnati with Queens Village as well, Every Mother's Advocate, which I talked about a little bit earlier, prevention services, RFPs, and also the 513 Relief Bus, as I mentioned before, I see as a, a prevention-related model as well. Opportunity, should I say. Prevention in the community so far, prevention services led to a 14 issued contracts with community partners. Each one of those 14 contracts were $200,000 each for two years. We also have contracts with divert, with Domestic Violence Enhanced Response Team through Women Helping Women to address violence in the community and exposure of youth to violence in, in the household and to address that on the front end. Also have a contract with Women Helping Women in the YWCA to provide school-based gender violence prevention programs. City Links Every Mother's Advocate partnership, Cradle Cincinnati Safe Sleep Campaign, and also United Way of Greater Cincinnati, the Family Support Network, which helps families who need support and help on the front end, get access to resources that might quell a crisis situation and hopefully give them the support necessary to potentially reduce the likelihood that they come into our front door in the first place. Further prevention programs will be designed and implemented based on the findings from community engagement work, which I'll get to in just a second. Related to our older youth, youth transitioning out of care, employment, education, and community support through our Office of Youth, Youth Advocate Program, Mentoring Program, Found Village, as well as Best Point. Housing and financial support for our older youth. Lighthouse Youth Services Transition Independence and Shakely Center Expansion, we've supported through the grant, I mean, through the levy. Gift cards and reimbursement to youth rent, for youth rent and other essentials, and a universal basic income pilot for youth emancipating of 100, not $100,000, but $1,000 a month to support their transition into adulthood. In addition to that, targeted system improvements, expanding our youth advisory board and resetting our youth advisory board to get feedback from youth that have been involved in the child welfare system. My First Place Systems Assessment led by Youth Voice, youth navigator positions, as well as systems assessment led by youth voices, all related to our youth in care that are older or transitioning out of you, out of care. In addition to that, with respect to older youth, we've implemented the Beyond Your Imagination Program, and that has allowed our youth to take part in HBCU college tours, cultural and, and other sporting events, as well as concerts, increase community awareness to drive donations, as well as engaged over 1,100 individuals since launching in April of 2023. Community engagement is another area that came out of the Tax Levy Review Committee recommendations. One of the things that we've done is take our Office of Clients Rights and reorganize that as Office of Systems Partnerships and Community Solutions. And that took our fatherhood work, our systems work through Children's Services, and also our community outreach work under one roof so that we can have a more coordinated approach to meeting the needs of those in the community and talking and hearing from people in the community about the services that we provide so that we can make adjustments to that and improve the services overall. We've also added new positions in that office to ensure that we are able to meet the needs of the community in that regard. We're also supporting the Office of Economic Inclusion with our expertise on the development of the Office of Family Voice with our staff, in addition to the work that we're doing through community engagement with the 513 Relief Bus. Community focus groups facilitated, facilitated by Cohere, launched in 2024. Cohere will facilitate, facilitate 15 focus groups targeting JFS clients, caregivers, and professionals who interface with HEJFS. The goal is to identify gaps and opportunities to increase the community's access to services and resources, and they will provide a final report and recommendations by July of 2024. So our goal is to take that information, then that feedback, to help us then think about other strategies and approaches that we can take to support the community through the levy. So the next slide reflects the levy fund balance as of today and what we project as compared to the Tax Liberty Review Recommendations. So this slide shows the levy balance as of 2026 and includes a $30 million revenue reserve, according to the consultant recommendation. So if you look at that slide, it shows at the end of this levy cycle, a balance of $97 million. If you take into account that there is a recommendation from the consultant that that go no low, lower than 30 million, you're looking at approximately a $67 million balance based on what we are projecting today. It does not account for some other potential expenditures that I were referred to and talk about on the next, that next slide. But I, I will indicate, I will say that what we anticipate as potential opportunities that we know we need to think about, that may or may not come to fruition, but we hope that they will, are to fund currently vacant positions. So if we do, if we're successful at recruiting and bringing staff onboard at the new pay rate, we need to be prepared to fund those positions. And we have currently about a 30% vacancy rate in assessment and close to 40 and ongoing. Increased costs, like I said before, with children coming into care with more complex needs. The costs associated potentially with supporting Hillcrest, as that comes online, we're working directly with the judge and juvenile court on that process as they are finding providers that hopefully will operate Hillcrest. We are in conversation with them about potential costs associated with that, as well as a potential housing for transition age youth. We talked about providing a monthly stipend, but there's also some opportunity potentially to look at housing, investing in housing for transition age youth as well, who need that level of support, in addition to the expansion of prevention services that we talked about previously. So here are the opportunities. And this is based on conversations in the community and, and discussions with And this is based on conversations in the community and discussions with members of the community and also JFSPC around what's happening, what's going on on the ground right now, and how the levy might be able to support those things. So public-private partnerships to address youth violence and mental health. And I mentioned earlier that we know youth, youth mental health issues are on the rise. So thinking about how the levy might be able to leverage that and support that in a public-private partnership. Support of trauma-informed care and training for families and professionals. Potential investment in capital projects that serve children and families and the placement of care in children. And also collaboration with educational jurisdictions in the city and the county that support reductions in child maltreatment. So that concludes the update on where things stand related to the levy, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And let me first of all state that jobs and family services is the safety net of the county. And we really appreciate all the work. It's not easy work. It's tough work. And I also want to highlight on your slide, you have the Office of Youth, and you kind of just listed it. I think that needs to kind of be pulled out because I'd like to know the data of how many youths we put to work. I know it impacted 27,000, but how many people we put to work? How many people got certifications that wouldn't have gotten it this past, with two weeks now? And I'm going to keep screaming it because it was the young people when they were doing something bad. They had the drone shot and they were showing it every, breaking news, breaking news. But when we had something positive, it's one time hit and then they got to move on and they don't, can't put it in the newspaper. They couldn't write a story about it. But 1,000 youth showed up two weeks ago that wanted to work. They got there even before the staff could get set up. I want to say that your staff, Sarah Gray, I want to say Trevina Adams and Najee Leary and everybody that was involved. It was the first time we did something like that. We went to Evanston. We were in the community and young people were there with resumes. They were of all different races and they were lined up with no fighting, no arguing, nobody got shot to get jobs, to get opportunities. And we had the folks there to get all the opportunities. We took away the barriers. We had birth certificates there at no charge. We had, and this is some of the ARPA money we used. Some of these things you have in here, we use some ARPA money. We had a doctor on the bus to take the physicals at no cost. And young people were standing in line patiently waiting to get the work physical. We had the two people who got the RFPs to give jobs to Talbot House and Harbor were there. And I understand 243 people got hired that day, had all their stuff ready to go. They're, they're ready to get there. GCMI has created a program just for Hamilton County Office of Youth. That's an entrepreneurship program and most time really entrepreneur, we don't get paid unless you, you sell something, you ain't getting paid. But this, we're paying them to train them to be entrepreneurs. And so we had the music there with Ebony J and then also can get hired and learn how to be a DJ and learn how to have podcasts and learn how to go into communications. We had the haircuts there. The school out of Forest Park was there. And it was just a sight to see. For me, I just want to put the pictures up every single day because it debunks the myth that all young people want to mess up and do something wrong because we don't put enough attention on the ones that do something right. And a lot of those kids came out of JFS services as well. And they've trying to put out that the JFS kids are the ones that's, you know, and that's, that's, that's not right. So I want you to take a slide. Don't just put it in a bullet point. This thing is a big deal. We don't have CCY anymore, but we got an Office of Youth. And they're working their butts off to provide these opportunities and these young people. I have got 13 and I'm still trying to find how can I help them? He said, please, Commissioner Reese, I want to work. Had his resume and everything suited and booted. I said, man, I got to find something for this young man. He won't turn 14 in enough time, but I've got to find something. We got to mentor, come up and volunteer, keep him to some positive impact. So I wanted to highlight that while you're here. I know you, you weren't able to be there, but I wanted to tell you.
Thank you.
Director, this is the one, you shouldn't have missed that one. That was a good one. But I know that you, I want you to know your staff did a.
Appreciate that. And I can get those numbers to you about Harbor and Talbot and what we've done so far with those contracts. They've been really good partners with us and continue to do great work in the community. And so when I talk about prevention and the other services we provide, to me, all of those things are connected to creating a better quality of life for families that could potentially reduce the likelihood that children are abused and neglected. So to me, it's all connected. And the levy supports that to a, to a degree as well.
Yeah. So I wanted to make sure that was highlighted, particularly in this time of what they're showing.
Absolutely.
People not wanting to do positive. The other thing that I wanted to find out, now this levy, is this when they combined the two levies?
That is correct.
Okay, I wanted to make sure of that. And then I wanted to highlight these, a question you had about keep some money back for Hillcrest. I don't know if this is a question for you or for Mr. Ludo. How are we paying for Hillcrest prior to us combining these levies?
I can answer that, Jeff. So we do, we had, we have an agreement with Hillcrest. And the way it was structured previously is that we supported them for children that were in care and JFS custody, reserved specific beds for children that were adjudicated abused and neglected and we had custody of. As we think about the levy and the language in the levy that talks about the placement and care of children, we're, we're working with the court to try to think about whether or not there's a way to restructure those agreements to provide additional support for what I would consider to be multi-system youth that may be involved with JFS, but also may be involved with other systems to support a space locally that we can keep kids placed in locally, that they're connected to their family, they're connected to resources locally. But we also have an interest in making sure that those kids are getting support so that they don't end up in a situation where they are in our custody long term. So that we're still, we're still thinking through that. And that, a lot of that will be driven by the selection of the operator that the, that the judge and our staff are helping to make to talk about what their vision and what their structure will be. Once the details are worked out, there will have more information on what that, what that will mean.
Okay, when you say kept locally.
We don't have to place them out, we don't have to place them out of.
Okay, so they weren't at Hillcrest. They were, they were somewhere else and you're saying bringing.
Well, the reopening of Hillcrest will allow us to keep kids locally that we currently don't have available.
I know that. I know now. I'm telling you, I want to go back to.
Yes.
Where I'm going at is before we combined these two levies, there was a Hillcrest. Obviously, it was paid for. You're saying, because I'm looking at the, I'm about to get to the 67 million. And before we had these two levies and the 67 million sitting around. We were funding something with Hillcrest.
The levy was funding children in care at Hillcrest that were in our custody.
So that was done prior to it.
That's correct. That's correct.
Now those kids obviously shut down. You got to send them outside.
Correct.
Area. Okay, got it. Next, I wanted to ask you on the piece where you talk about mental health. Now, we had mental health. Now, let me just say this. I do support levies, but I want to make sure that the people struggling right now. And we got to be clear on this. People are struggling out here and I'm trying to make sure that whatever we putting on or how we do, even with the zoo, we kept it flat or whatever. Whatever we're doing. Now, mental health, we put more on, so the people voted for it. And now on here, you're saying that you've got to now fund mental health.
Youth.
So.
Youth, mental health.
So our mental health levy that we increased does not include youth?
I do not believe so. I can, we got, we can get.
It does not. It does not.
It does some, okay.
Because I don't want overlapping. I'm trying to figure out how do we, because everybody's saying they doing this, they doing that, they doing. I'm trying to bring them all together. So for me, I'd like to just know from the mental health levy that the people passed, that they're paying more for. And maybe you can't answer it today.
I can't. These, these are conversations that are currently, we're currently having about how to best leverage the resources of the county to make sure that.
So I need to know a better understanding myself because people say, hey, I paid more. I'm supposed to be getting more. And they're doing something and we're going to come and overlap it with the same, with some more levy dollars. So I just want to make sure we can stretch every levy dollar we got. Because that's what people get mad about these. They came in here, hundreds of people. They mad about their homes. They upstairs or wherever they pay. They crying, about to lose everything. So we have to, you know, it might be a little different for us because we, but we, we have a responsibility, I feel, for me. I might not be the popular, maybe around here, but it's out there. It's very popular. But what people are saying that we want to do these things, but how can we make sure that we're very frugal on what we're doing? I just, when you put that on there, that made me think. I said, wait a minute. We got the largest mental health levy in the history of Hamilton County. And I believe there were a lot of things that we're going to be doing with youth as one of the targets. At least that's what we were told.
Yes.
So if you all could get to, yes. Okay, but I'm just saying, don't double charge.
No, absolutely not. No, anything related to the levy that would talk about youth mental health, we would certainly make sure that it's not a duplicative service.
That's very important. I see the youth violence. I understand that part.
Absolutely.
My other question is, the levy allows for capital?
We've got, we've got, for children, the care and placement of children. We have had some conversations and gotten some, some opinions from the, from the prosecutor that indicate that we, that will be an allowable cost if it, if it meets that expectation. So yes.
Okay, that was good to know. So now we have $97 million right now unencumbered.
At the end of 2020.
Yes, okay. It'll be unencumbered. And then we want to keep 30 million, which I agree we got to keep in the, in the hopper. You said at least it was 67 million. Now, you said you got some employees, I would assume that wouldn't be 67 million dollars.
No, no, it's a part of the calculation. In terms of employee, overall employees.
How much you think would probably, is it 20 million?
I'd have to get, I have to get that number too.
Can you get back? Because I'm trying to see what I don't want, you know, because people are, it's tough out here.
Sure.
And everybody wants to support our children. I do too. At the same time, we got people who are parents who can't hold, can't keep the house going. So now they don't want their kids to go into the system because they can't afford it. They don't want to end up going on, on SNAP. They want to be able to, to pay their household. So I just don't want to have a habit of hoarding any money that we ain't got used. Then we say, we try to use it because that's what they always say about government. They say, government gets money and then they hurry up and spend, try to spend it all so they can get more money. This is what, you know, what people say that are taxpayers. So I'm looking at this as I need to know with the $67 million, what is going realistically, because I believe you can still get your staff. I believe you still could do, you know, events, even if you took out 40 million. You know, you still got almost $30 million that possibly could go back to the homeowners. Now, some will say that, that this is meant for the children. How would we know to give back to them? How do you know the same way when we do a rebate? The people, the only people paying is the homeowners. Renters ain't paying this. So we know the homeowners because we send them a bill for their property taxes. And I'm just saying, I need to know, I, for me, I just need to know. I don't want to look as though I'm hoarding $67 million unaccounted for. Even if I do $40 million, I take care of everybody who working, the salaries. I got money for some new programs. It still leaves me almost $30 million. And so my point is, how can we give the homeowner who's paying for this? Can we give them a break? Can they get a rebate? That's where I'm going to. And it may not be the most popular thing, but like I said, I'm hearing people say like, it's popular out here because people say, hey, I need a break. So that's why I was asking you about, it would help me. Maybe it's not even possible if you say, hey, it's, you know, $50 million I got to do for staffing and blah, blah, blah. But it helps me. But to put out here is $97 million to be available. We only want to keep 30 million in reserve and now we got $67 million. And then we jump up and say, well, we got some people to pay salaries. People go saying, $67 million in salaries? But if you have, if there's a capital project coming up, I just need to know.
I understood.
What it is and make sure that there is a need for it now. Not we're going to come up with a need. We're going to come up with some stuff. And so that's, and even with programming, if you took 40 million off of here, that gives you enough to do new programs. It gives you enough to do your salaries and it leaves 27 million and you still got 30 million in the reserve. And maybe we can do something, that's not your decision to make, but maybe we can do something that would help the, the homeowners who are, they're the only ones that pay for this, is if you're a homeowner. So I just wanted to just bring that up as a possibility. I'm not saying it has to be, but I'm trying to think creatively.
I think we'll have some more certainty too, Commissioner President Reese, around the information from Cohere. Really want to look and listen to the community and the folks that are getting the service to see if there's some areas where we could, that we're not currently aware of, that we need to be paying more attention to. And so again, I've had conversations in the community about youth violence, youth mental health, those kinds of things, as well as potential capital and infrastructure-related need for children, particularly school, transition age youth coming out of care and whether or not that would be something significantly that we could do locally to support their stability as they come out of care in addition to what our arrangement with Hillcrest will ultimately look like. So those are things that I can't speak to directly specifically today, but they're, they're on the, on the horizon and will give us a better picture of what that'll look like.
Okay, that'll help me. Like I said, I want to make sure we're doing everything we can for the, for the children. But I don't want to be honest. I don't want no double, doing double things. And I just want to see, how do we break out this 67 million? And is there any wiggle room?
Understood.
I just not, but I want to be able to say we looked at it to see if there's. Okay, well, thank you very much. I'll open up to Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for your presentation. Thank you all for being here. The JFS team is here in force, so it's nice to see everybody. Michael, when we talked about the levy and the dollars, the resources that the JFS has, we talked about it in terms of trying to keep, trying to address the needs of kids, but ultimately keep them out of care.
Prevention.
Really don't want them in care. And so at that time, there was a chart, and I'm going to ask you if you can recreate it and send it to us. It may have been Moira, actually, that had the chart. So it's been a while back. But it, it referred to the, the calls that came in. Or the, so 241, any other way you get some kind of emergency call about a kid, about safety of a kid. And so it had that number and then it had the number of kids that eventually ended up in care. And, and what we were trying to do is reduce that number, you know, you can't, you can't do much about the number of calls that come in. We can do something about what we're doing to try to either keep those kids safely at home, have them engage in kinship care, you know, all these steps before you get to that final result of these kids entering the system, which is a very permanent, you know, thing to do. And so I'm wondering if you can recreate that chart so that we can see with a trajectory over the past, say, five years or six years, what those numbers look like. You, you've gotten to some of it here and why the levy is important and the calls to 241 kids, the total kids served. I would like to see the kin piece because we have worked so hard to stand up that kinship care program because we know it's good for kids and good for families. I'd like to see that interspersed right there in the middle to see if that's working. And then give us, you know, the trajectory, as I said, over a certain period of time so that we can see whether or not these investments, this kind of the different strategy, more proactive strategy of JFS is having an impact. By these numbers, it feels like maybe.
Yeah. It's relatively flat. It's going down a little bit. But we can get the numbers that will give you an indication of the, the status of that particular child in care and the custody status of the child in care. And, and I think we can also tie that to the amount of time that they are in that particular status. And so we can get some indication of whether or not that number is growing or going down per status. Kinship, permanency, that, not permanency, permanency would be one too, but temporary custody, permanent custody, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Because that was kind of what we were getting at, right, what we were accomplishing. And it's hard to tell because this is such a small snapshot. It's hard to tell.
Okay.
Whether or not it's having an impact. So the other thing then that occurs to me, so I'd love to get that graph again. And I, do you know what graph I'm referring to?
I believe so. I think we have overtime, the type, the status of a particular child overtime. So I believe I know what you're referring to.
All right.
We can, if I don't have it, we can recreate something that I think meets, answers your question.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. Um, because it kind of gets to this idea of whether or not the investing that we're doing.
Yes, absolutely.
Is making a difference. So the other thing that occurs to me then, um, and you, I think, touched on it, which is when we talk about the stability of the family, um, a number of years ago, we were hearing from some of the families who had kids that were in care, whether it was kinship or moving towards, uh, permanent care. Um, and so we were standing up the Office of Family Voice.
Mm-hmm.
What is the status of that?
Uh, we are supporting Robert and his team with the, with, uh, standing that Office of Family Voice up here. Uh, and so I believe they are in the process of hiring or may have hired someone in that, in that role. Jeff, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Yeah, so, so we're working with them to help support, uh, the development of the office so that, uh, locally, uh, we have a system in place that families can go to to help navigate upfront uh, what their experience, uh, is with, uh, with job and family services or, or, and this would be also the goal is to, um, potentially staff it with, uh, people with lived experience so that we have an access point or entry point that would act as potentially a preventative, uh, educational space for people who, uh, are, uh, either at risk or maybe even, uh, already involved in child welfare so that they can have, uh, sort of a neutral way to help them navigate the system.
Yeah.
So that, that is, that is currently under, uh, the, um, uh, Office of Economic Inclusion. And we're supporting that with our resources and our, and our personnel.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then the, the final thing is related to the, um, turnover.
Yes.
Which I continue to be really, really concerned about. Um, so I, again, I think it might be helpful to see kind of the, um, the trajectory of that because I know that you were here last year, the year before and the year before, and we were worrying about turnover. And so you have implemented some things in some ways with the support of the board to say, yes, we want to pay higher wage, yes, we want to provide, you know, these different things to the folks that are doing this work, uh, with the understanding that it's extremely stressful to do this work every day. Um, so you, you talked about wages and as being one of the strategies. And we're coming up on some negotiations, so we'll keep that in mind. What are some of the other strategies that you have or are putting in place to try to retain some of these, uh, frontline?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. We've, we've expanded, and Margie can maybe speak to this a little bit better than me, but I know we've expanded, uh, the credentials that were required to come in the front door because we had a very narrow set of, uh, skills and education that someone had to have before they would even, uh, be considered for an interview. We've expanded that. Uh, we've been working with HR as well as an external vendor, uh, to do some, uh, recruitment of external, uh, external folks that might be interested in working, uh, within JFS. We have an internal team that meets with HR on a regular basis, uh, to look at ways to streamline, uh, the experience that someone has with JFS from the time that they submit an application, uh, to help them get a better sense of what the job looks like. Some of that has to do with the VR, virtual headsets. Uh, we also do some, uh, preliminary, uh, tours of the building. So people can come in and sort of get an understanding of what the work looks like so that we have a better, uh, retention rate. What we've noticed is that the pay implementations that we've done over the last couple of years have had some impact on seasoned staff. So staff that were already here, experienced, that has stabilized a bit. Uh, we're still seeing some turnover though that are not staying as long, uh, in that role. And that is a, a national trend. It's not just local, but that is a national trend where we, we're seeing some turnover with staff as it relates to that. Uh, Margie, if I'm missing anything? I'll let Margie. Margie might have some other specifics.
Thank you. The only thing I would add is we've really, um, we've, um, offered an onboarding group for our new hires, um, so those new to the work, so that we can really keep a pulse on, um, their learning um, and, and the culture. And we're also getting feedback from them. Um, so we just had our first year cohort. They gave us feedback about what went well and helped them on their onboarding and what did not. We also are invested heavily in internships, um, partnering with colleges around internship programs and are offering paid internships when, where we can. Um, and we also have a pending fellowship program so that we can, um, offer experiences, uh, to the county for, uh, college students in general that are paid and work around, uh, their, um, college schedules, um, to just get them exposure to, um, the experience at working in children's services or in any area in, uh, social services and county government.
Thank you.
Yeah, all, all good stuff. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and then so lastly, you know, I know there is, um, a movement or an effort throughout the community to take a look at youth mental health.
Mm-hmm.
Given some of the challenges that we see, the, uh, the increased suicides, the increased need for mental health services, especially for youth. Um, I know that you have been approached as, you know, with your expertise and the population that you deal with, um, to engage in that effort, and I, I for one think that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
And so th- this collaboration between yourself and some of the other experts throughout the community to try to figure out strategies to address some of the serious mental health challenges that face youth in the community. I, I am grateful for, um, your efforts there and I hope they continue. Um, and then as far as the, you know, the levy goes and what we might hear from the TLRC of, you know, the expanded programming and the reserve and whatnot, I will, uh, reserve my comments, uh, for that time. But I, I want to be very cautious about, um, diminishing the reserve when we're not really sure what we're looking at in the near future or in the, you know, the long term. Um, you know, people voted for this levy in the way they did because they wanted more services and, and really a smarter approach, uh, to trying to keep kids safely at home. Uh, that's what the investments were intended to do. And so I am, um, interested to hear, you know, how this, the, the, um, mid levy cycle review, um, comes out and, and have the TLRC weigh in on, uh, what their thoughts are. So I reserve judgment, but I, I do want to, for myself, uh, proceed cautiously uh, to make sure that we don't get ourselves in a situation where we have not used all the dollars, turn them back and then find ourselves in need of the dollars, uh, right? That's the last thing I want to do. And so, um, I just want to be very cautious and careful, um, as we move forward related to the monies that we have and the full implementation, implementation of the strategy because we haven't fully implemented strategies.
Right.
And so until we do that, we really don't know what the cost is going to be, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Absolutely.
Proceed with a little bit of caution.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the extensive, um, presentation. I appreciate it. Um, one thing I do know is, um, and I always ask Jeff, what is the purpose of the children's levy? And he'll tell me, but one thing I know without getting the definition is it is a children's levy for children, for their treatment, prevention, education and services. I have no doubt about that. And I have no doubt about the fact that the numbers are going up as it relates to children that are in need of services. Um, not necessarily all of them have come into the system, but it just reminds me of the mental health levy. People are having more issues with their mental health and so the numbers are, are going up too. Um, so, um, I in no way want to use any of that money for anything other than for children and the services for children, so I need to, to make that clear for myself. Um, secondly, um, I wanted to thank Travina for her summary of the youth event. I thought it was just really fantastic what happened there. I said that the last meeting, but her summary, uh, that just came out was excellent. And then, uh, Director Patton, you had a summary that came out a couple of days ago and it was just really, you could see a good view, a landscape of what, uh, went on and what's going on. So, um, I'm really concerned also as we look at staffing. Wondering about the quality assurance component of, um, the ratio is, uh, I think, I had it written down.
Oh, a COA?
Yeah. Uh, where is it at? Thirty-two versus twelve for the caseload.
An assessment, yes.
Yeah. So concerned about that because at the point that a parent decides, I'm going to call JFS. It took a lot for them to do that, as you all know that are here. I wanted to welcome the staff also. Thank you for coming. But to think that we, I don't know how we continue to pass, uh, the test when we, uh, continue to say we have so many people on our caseload and it sounds like you guys are doing as much as you can do to get people in. I don't have the answer. But I, I know that I don't, I wouldn't want to lose any of those parents or families that have had the courage to call in. And so, um, I don't know what we do about.
I mean, a lot of the work, I, I want to give credit where credit is due to the team and Margie and her team for meeting on a regular basis to think about, uh, how to divide the work up, to be quite frank, I mean, quite honest with you. You have to look at what you have available, uh, and what the priorities are, uh, to make sure that we're seeing children and we're meeting the mandates of, uh, home visits and investigations as they come in, uh, within the mandated timeframe. And so that means that, uh, supervisors are doing work, in some cases, section chiefs are doing work. Uh, folks that are in adoptions, uh, are doing that kind of work, uh, just so that we make sure that, uh, we are keeping children safe. So, uh, it, it's been a pretty challenging timeframe for that, but, uh, given, given the circumstances, I think the team has done a really good job of making sure that, uh, folks are on it. And the other thing I'd say is that the vast majority of staff understand that. I mean, it's not a secret, right? You, you say, listen, we don't, we, we have fewer staff, we have children that need to be seen. We need everybody to step up and try to provide that support. Uh, and so, um, my, my experience is that people that enter into that field, uh, understand that and they by and large do step up and provide that support and that coverage until we can get that position or those positions backfield.
So as, um, the staff that you have had who decided not to stay, um, do they meet with HR and say, why? And also we're getting a good flavor of why they're leaving?
Yeah, so, so we do, uh, work with HR and, uh, get some feedback, uh, from time to time from HR related to, uh, some of the concerns that, uh, they may have expressed. Uh, but I can get, get you some more information on that.
Okay.
Uh, but we do get some indications, uh, on that. Uh, and would certainly, uh, welcome, uh, more of that and, and to get some, uh, insight so that we can, uh, also make adjustments on the front end or, uh, modify the process internally so that we can address, uh, those concerns more consistently.
Thank you. And I noticed on your data that you presented, um, calls have been reduced for two-four-one kids. Abuse reports have been reduced and the total families served is reduced, which is really a great thing. We still need you guys, of course. There are thousands on there. But, uh, that tells me that there's more reunification of families. And that's our whole goal, not our only goal, but our whole goal, to try to see if we can keep them not only in this area, but with their, with their families. Um, one concern I had, and it goes back to vacancies, um, thirty percent short on assessments and forty percent, um, as far as staffing on ongoing services. And I, my concern is if we don't have enough or don't have the right ones in there to do the assessment, then you make an assessment on a child who you put, not you, in the system and they stay in the system. And so that assessment component is just so important and you guys know, I'm telling you that. But, um, so we just, I, I'll just be really happy to see those. And I know you will too, working overtime to get those numbers down. So I think that was all that I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I just have one other thing in terms of the, um, employment piece.
Mm-hmm.
Doing some very delicate work, um, and.
Youth employment, Commissioner? Youth, youth employment?
No, no, I'm going on the, uh, abuse and neglect component. And I just wanted to make sure there's, um, oversight because the wrong move, we had a, there was a blunder made not too long ago that we all know about. I won't go into that. But even something as simple as the stationary. Somebody called me and said, you're not even on the sta- I've been here four years and I'm not even on the stationary and this person is in charge of assessing a child. So you can't get the right stationary. Who are the commissioners? How are you going to be the personnel to assess a child? So I just want to make sure there's oversight. Um, and, um, you know, I, I hope we have remedied, not only that for all departments, but remedy that part because four years, I mean, that's a long time not to have it right. Um, so that made me a little nervous that.
Sure.
You're working here, you're working, we're voting on all this stuff and you got stationary that don't even have, you know, got commissioners from four and six, seven years ago on the stationary. And now you're going to go assess a case which you supposed to be investigating. And then obviously you made a big mistake on that one. So I just want to make sure that as you bring in, there's oversight. There's somebody there to double and triple check things, uh, because these are some, I mean, outside of the stationary, obviously, but these are some important decisions on people's children. Um, or, you know, or non-children in, in that case. So just wanted to see, are we putting some?
Yeah, we're, we're addressing.
Place to oversight those things?
So, yeah, you, you, I mean, that's a good point. Um, and so without going to a lot of details, we've, we've, we're going to address that, uh, agency wise, not just in children's services, but, uh, it's been, uh, I think, complicated a bit by remote work and folks saving old templates to their desktop and using that as opposed to going to the online repository where updated forms are, are kept. So it's about reminding staff where to find the most current form and getting rid of, uh, forms that they've used in the past that they may have sa- saved on their desktop and continue to use it for, for speed or convenience as opposed to going to get the right form. So we, we're going to, uh, we're sending out a reminder to make sure folks know where to find the correct updated templates to use and, and as they transact business.
I just thought about something as simple as if they don't, they don't know I'm a commissioner. How they going to investigate this situation? It requires some investigation. Then they investigate, it was the wrong thing anyway. So that was another mistake. So I just wanted to make sure that there's oversight. It seems you're going to put those tools.
Sure.
Appreciate that. Okay, Mr., uh, you had something, Commissioner Dumas?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the youth employment.
Yes.
Office, um, and since our youth employment is year-round, uh, do you anticipate needing more funding for that office?
Yes, we have a meeting, uh, I have a meeting Thursday to talk about what that is going to look like as the numbers and the popularity continues to grow. So we're talking about that and, uh, uh, on, on Thursday, we'll, we'll have a better, uh, understanding what those projections look like for, uh, for this year and going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And just once again, I want to thank all of you for such a hard position, your passion for young people. And then you work with some adults also. And thank you so much. Words cannot express for me the work that you do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Mr. Dumas, anything?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Ludo?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, just one, not so much a question, and actually, Michael, this is partially for you, maybe partially for, uh, your financial team and for Lisa.
Okay.
Actually, um, but so as I'm looking at the financial trends here, the thing that, um, I think is a bit concerning is, as we think about, um, the mid-cycle review, think about the, the final levy review in a couple of years, is just the, the sustainability, um, of the, the levy expenditures. And I think that's something we're going to want to work closely with the board on in terms of understanding the desired level of programming. Uh, because as we've got it slated here, you know, assuming that the desired level of programming lies somewhere between, um, the current estimate and the consulting plan.
Right.
Uh, then that is, you're, you're drawing down, um, anywhere in those final years, anywhere between, um, uh, you know, on average, maybe twenty-twenty.
Twenty-five.
Year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so we want to fit, you know, as, I think as we get into the next levy cycle, I think as you, as you mentioned, you know, to the degree that there is a, um, a fund balance of, of in the thirties, which I assume we need for cash flow.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I think, we want to figure out how to, how to give that a soft landing to the degree that we can because if, if that, and, and that presupposes this being the desired level of service, right?
Correct.
But to the degree it is, um, you know, I think we need to, we need to work hard on how does that not become a problem into the next levy cycle? Um, because, uh, the, the.
Understood.
The past levies we've tried to hold steady on, we combined, uh, the levies in the past, but, um, and I, and we're still a couple of years out, but, um, so anyway, I think.
No, I, I think that's a really valid point. And we talked about, uh, the original tax levy review recommendations and the, the care and placement of children and what that meant, uh, strategically for the levy over a five-year period compared to maybe what we've done in the past, which was to maybe, uh, focus more directly on children and care. And so, you know, we have to think about that now because that's, that's different when you think about sustainability and our partners who may get funded to do that. Uh, what does that look like for kids? And you don't want to put a, a program in place that is going to end in two and a half years, particularly if it has po- positive impact and it's dependent on the levy, then that's, to me, that's a conversation that we need to have with the tax levy review a- a- as we go forward and make decisions about who we enter into agreements with and contracts with, uh, for a long-term sustainability. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Mental Health and Recovery Service Board Mobile Crisis Team Update.
Next, we have Mental Health and Recovery Service Board Mobile Crisis Team update.
I'm Lenora Godfrey, President of the Hamilton County Mental Health and Recovery Services Board. And real quick, just to reassure you, the duplication, you had asked about the duplication of services with children, job and family services. We have some pooled funding and we have relationship with them contractually with two main contracts, which avoids that duplication. We work very closely together. Actually, we had a meeting the other day to talk about collaboration and how we can enhance that collaboration. So that, those contracts help us to avoid any duplication of services. As you can imagine, since COVID, the acuity of the youth as well as families have, has grown exponentially. So there's, there's a definite need out there. And so we work very collaboratively together. But I am here today to announce, I have my staff person with me, Linda Gallagher. And then we have two, there was actually three from UC Health. As you remember, the board approved ARPA funding to support the expansion of the Mobile Crisis Team to 24/7. And so Katie Cannon, who is the manager of the program, will present today.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi there. Thank you so much for having us here today. We are honored to be in front of the board and talk a little bit about our program and how we've been able to extend it due to the ARPA funding. So our Mobile Crisis Team is comprised of leadership from our social work, social work director at UC Health, that's Jamie Robinson. Myself, I'm the manager of the team. We also have a supervisor of the team we've been able to add. So the Mobile Crisis Team is through UC Health. It is funded through the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board and grant funders. So a little bit about just our staff, a little bit about what we do and who we are. Oh, gotcha, that's me. So a little bit about who we are and what we do. The Mobile Crisis Team has actually been around for 39 years. Our purpose is to assess adults and children in the community. We do see individuals of all ages who are experiencing a mental health crisis or behavioral health crisis. Some of the services that we perform are crisis intervention, follow-up visits, and assistance with voluntary and involuntary hospitalizations. Now, I think it's very important to mention that as the Mobile Crisis Team, one of our main missions is to reduce number of hospitalizations and keep individuals out of the hospital. We don't want to take someone into the hospital if we can use our clinical skills to de-escalate, keep that person in the community, make sure that we can keep them out of trouble with the law. We want to work with our team and the dollars that we have that will talk about expanding our team and adding a peer team to make sure these individuals can stay in their homes and get outpatient treatment whenever possible. So some of the support that I was talking about at the beginning from funding, we received $5 million of the American Rescue Plan Act funding back in 2023. This money was used to expand our MCT services quite a bit. We have been able to be more readily available for crises. One of the biggest ways that we've been able to do that is 24/7 operations. What we've seen is that we were really needed in, in those times that we weren't available before. Now, in the last year, we've had actually a year, April to March 31st, of data with ARPA funding to see that 16% of our calls come in on overnights and 12% of our calls come in on weekends. That's close to 30% of calls that we weren't able to get before because we just weren't available. One of our biggest focuses is on diversion. That diversion is twofold. We look to divert from the emergency departments in the city, psychiatric emergency rooms, emergency departments for physical health as well. And then also just as important, diversion from the legal system. We work very closely with our law enforcement partners at the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and also City of Cincinnati and municipalities within the, the larger Hamilton County jurisdictions in order to reduce the stigma of mental illness, reduce the criminalization of mental illness, work to de-escalate, keep people out of jail, get people in the hospital if they need it. In addition, this money has been able to help us double the size of our team. With that, we have also expanded into satellite offices, which include the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office on Hamilton Avenue. We have two county staff who actually sit out there and are able to staff that location, get to locations in the county faster. And then finally, we are dispatched through the City of Cincinnati 911. So we are able to carry the police radios and get dispatched straight to calls. So a little bit about what our numbers are showing. Total encounters that we've had in the last year, over 8,500 encounters with a master's level clinician, meaning that individuals who have called in or we've gone on scene to runs, we have able to, we've been able to provide over 8,500 encounters with an MCT worker. In addition to this, 3,200, almost 3,200 of our contacts have been with peer support specialists. The Peer Support Specialist Program did not exist before ARPA funding. So thanks to this money, we've been able to add a team of six peers. These are individuals with lived experience in mental health and addiction who have been able to add to our team and add to our ability to do follow-up. So the age breakdown of what our team is seeing, we're seeing about a third of our patients are ages 18 to 34. Another third of our patients are around that 35 to 54 breakdown. But I really wanted to point out the 0 to 17 age range. That is about 8% of our calls right now. So we talked a little bit about how this money is helping fund youth and mental health in, in our city. So what we're doing right now is working on, collaborating on a children's crisis continuum. That's gonna include Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center, Best Point, JFS, other organizations to make sure that we're supporting the crisis continuum, going into schools, making sure that we're getting mental health treatment to children as well. For race breakdown, we see about a 50/50 breakdown. The City of Cincinnati has a general breakdown of race, 53% white, 43% African-American. So we see a little bit of disparity here. Not, not a terrible disparity. Same thing in gender, we see about a 50/50 breakdown. As far as clients served by area, you can see here that about 75% of our clients are served within the City of Cincinnati. A lot of that is due to us operating within the 911 call center. About 24, 25%, about a quarter of our calls are outside of the city limits within the county. However, we've seen a 9% increase with the ARPA funding. So we plan to continue to see growth in the county area, especially with those dollars coming in. Here's a look at some of the referral sources that we have coming in. And these are calls that come into the Mobile Crisis Triage Office. That's 37%. We also see calls come in directly from police, 911, and the police radios. And then we also get calls directly from behavioral health and community organizations. I want to talk a little bit about our peer support services because this has been an amazing program that we've been able to add through the ARPA funding. Our peer support services have been able to add to our outreach, our ability to follow up and do warm handoffs to behavioral health organizations. In the past, we would see someone in crisis in a point in time. And after that, follow-up would be minimal due to lack of resources, our inability to go back out and into the county because we had another crisis call. With our peers, our Mobile Crisis clinicians are able to refer to the peer services. And then the peers can go out in the community. They can meet with these individuals. They can work on housing, medication, food. What kinds of things are barriers to this person getting treatment? What's the reason this person is in crisis repeatedly? And get this person connected to warm handoffs to services so that they're able to get involved with a therapist, get involved with a community medication or psychiatrist, get set up for long-term success so we're not seeing them in the crisis continuum repeatedly. And then just a little bit about who our peer support specialists are. These are individuals with lived experience. So they do have to go through the Omas training for peer certification. But they also have to have that background. So it's a little bit different than somebody with a master's degree and a bunch of letters behind their names coming and knocking on your door and assessing you and deciding whether or not we're gonna have to take you into a hospital, right? It's somebody who can say, I've been there, I've been where you are, I know exactly what you're going through. And what we've seen is, is really wonderful outcomes with our peer program so far. So we have a slide here. This is actually one of our peers. So we wanted to add a little bit of a personal story. This is Danielle, she is our newest peer member. And hopefully I can play this. You're gonna do it, okay.
Hi, my name is Danielle and I'm a peer support specialist with UC Health. I have extensive lived experience with mental illness that at one point resulted in me sitting handcuffed in the back of a police car being transported to PES for a suicide attempt. Today, I have a beautiful life, an incredible husband, daily peace and contentment, and I do look forward to becoming a mother. Through the help of medication management, effective therapy, and the support and hope provided to me by others, I was able to recover to live a life I never dreamed I could have. I became a peer supporter to turn my pain into purpose and my mess into my message. Hi, my name is Danielle.
All right, so that's a little bit about our program. We, we truly want to say from the bottom of our hearts, thank you from the Mobile Crisis Team and UC Health for the ability to do what we do. I can say that I've personally been with the Mobile Crisis Team two years. So we've gotten to do just a 180 with this funding, our ability to help the community, and we're in love with what we do. The passion and the drive and the people that we've been able to add has been absolutely tremendous. And we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much for this presentation. And it's always good to see when we vote on something and then we go to a press conference. And now we hear about the actual work and the people we've helped. I certainly think it makes so much sense because 24 hours, you don't know when the situation is gonna happen. And it's not limited to nine to five when people need help. So I'm, I'm very happy about that. My question though is on the funding that we have. Do we still have, I mean, we should still have some funding. But are we good there? And are we able to continue to help more people about how long?
Yeah, so with the ARPA funding, our plan way through, we're about halfway through it essentially. So we've budgeted out the funding to last us through the end of 2026 in addition to our other funding.
Okay, 2026, okay. And then I have one other question. But I think you answered it when you said the satellite office is with the sheriff's office in College Hill?
Hamilton Avenue.
Hamilton Avenue, rather, okay. Yeah, I mean, I just doing exceptional work. So I just wanted to, to say that. And I'll open it up to Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to the team for being here. It's good to see everyone. I have a couple of questions. So you talked about the way you get calls about people that are in crisis. And the primary driver of that is police, 911, safety. So did you say that the 911 service you're tied into is city? And if the answer to that is yes, my obvious question is, is there a way to tie into a county system? And is there a reason that hasn't been done? Is it a matter of capacity? Or is that something that you've got, you have all thought about?
That is a great question. And so that is definitely something that we've thought about. And we actually are in the later stages of implementing. That should be happening very, very soon. We launched with 911 ECC in the City of Cincinnati, April of '23, which is around the time that we began our doubling of staff, making sure that we were able to staff the intense number, number of calls we were gonna get. We've been embedded in the City of Cincinnati for the last 39 years. So we assumed that that was kind of the low hanging fruit, the great place to start. What we knew about Hamilton County relationships is that we had to build them up. And we're not talking about one organization like the City of Cincinnati because we work very well with the City of Cincinnati. We're talking about all of these little different police districts and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. And so we've had to forge those relationships. It, it's been beautiful, especially with Sheriff McGuffey and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. They invited us in. They're right next door to Hamilton County ECC. So we actually have started those meetings. We started those back in December. And we learned a lot from integrating with 911 in the, in the city, mostly not to rush it. So we have the police radios, we have the system and software in place to get started. And we have the staff in place and capacity to take the run. So we really are just days and days away from launching in Hamilton County in addition to the Northeast, which is Loveland Sims Township area. So eventually, very, very soon, we plan to be in both of those areas responding to 911 calls as well.
Great, that's, that's great. I'm glad to hear that. So, you know, to pile on or to piggyback maybe on the funding question. So you've got this ARPA money, you're halfway through it. What happens when that money runs out? Have you all thought about sustainability plan for beyond?
So one of the things that I can say for me, and I'm sure for our director as well and, and the board that keeps us up at night is, you know, how we're gonna keep all of our staff that we've built in this wonderful program that we've built. And so we are looking at sustainability. And we're looking at sustainability in the way of grant funding. We're looking at petitional, additional avenues for potentially billing in the future for our services. It's not an ideal way to go forward with having to bill insurance or Medicaid for behavioral health. There, there are always lots of ins and outs. But it is something that we're prepared to do if we need to, to make sure that we can continue to, to have these great services in the community. And we'll continue to look for funding streams. Because what we know is that, that growing our staff has been immensely beneficial to the community. So we'll continue to, to navigate whatever avenue we can and have that plan in place when January 1st, 2027 comes.
I should have asked you, what are your funding sources?
So we are a completely grant-funded team right now. We are funded through the City of Cincinnati and then this ARPA funding.
Okay.
As well as the mental health-
Yeah, obviously, through the mental health board.
So you've got a-
Separate funding, ARPA funding comes through the board. ARPA funding comes through the board. We also have mental health levy funding that supports the Mobile Crisis Team. We have some city funding that supports-
Okay, that's helpful to know. And then lastly, I just want to say I'm a big, big fan of peer support. So glad to hear that you're expanding that. We have found on the addiction side that that is a critical piece of getting people into long-term recovery to provide that kind of support. We've added a peer person to our HCARC board in acknowledgement of that. So I'm glad to see that you guys are going down that same path. So thanks for what you're doing. It's, it's really important. And there's never been a more, a time in this community where we need it more. So thanks for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas. Thank you, thank you both for your presentation. I was looking at the Hamilton County support also and says you can call 911. But Linda, you and I kind of date each other. I think we were in the original meeting where we were trying to figure out how residents could call for help. And they were calling all over the county. And we developed MHAP, Mental Health Access Point. And so it still exists so they can call in there if they don't want to call 9, 911. So I think that what you, and then we, Linda and I talked about, because I was working in a crisis home in Mount Auburn, anchoring families together. Remember that, Linda? Long time ago. But we said we need a crisis, a mobile crisis. And that was that long ago. So we knew that the people needed to go where the people were. And so you guys have really expanded and enhanced it. And so it's just a necessity to go where people are. So thank you all for, for what you do. Thanks. Thank you very much, we appreciate the update. Thank you. There's no further business to come before us, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?